I'm not sure the people that have to hear this are here. After attending your last meeting, I thought I would come up here and remind you there actually are rules and procedures for how we conduct these meetings. I know you're a small county and you all know each other pretty well, so you kind of take a little liberties with how you behave in these meetings. But at the beginning of every meeting, there's an opportunity for you to make comment, and you're certainly invited to make comments at the beginning of the meeting. As we get into the meeting, then your right to make comments is more limited. And what I would like to say to each of you, if you're going to carry on a conversation here, please step out in the hall so they can continue the meeting. If you want to be recognized by the board, the correct time is when a motion has been made. Technically, you don't have anything to talk about until a motion is made. And when the motion is made, you can request to be recognized by the chair, and they can recognize you, and you can make your comments. Just yelling things out in the middle of the meeting is not only rude, it doesn't work. All it does is get everybody upset and riled up. If you have something to say, technically, there's a chair where you can come up here and have a direct conversation with the board if you want to make a comment. I don't know that the chair will require you to do that, but this isn't a sporting event. There are rules to follow, and you should follow them. If you don't follow them, technically, you can be asked to leave. Nobody wants to do that, but you owe it to yourselves, your neighbors, and the board to conduct this meeting in an appropriate manner, because you're not going to get anything really accomplished unless you do that. And, you know, I know you're all good people, you're all concerned about how things are done in the county, but it will work better for you if you abide the rules. That's all I have to say.
All right, we're going to officially call the meeting of the Buffalo County Commissioners to order. I need a motion to accept the agenda. Rex? All in favor? Okay, we need to approve the special meeting we had on April 25th. No, we didn't have any. Okay, Rex? All in favor? Thank you. Hand County Emergency Management Representative?
Where do you want me?
Up here, please.
Up in this chair?
Wherever, wherever it comes.
All right.
I like that.
Oh, perfect. Thank you. Okay.
I'm here at the request of a few that you're interested in looking at some services from Hand County, and to answer any questions or over any things that you might want to talk about.
What other counties beside Hand are you with? Just Hand or?
Just Hand, yep.
Okay.
I've been with Hand County for five years as the EM.
Okay.
And the experience I brought in is EMT firefighter, my land firefighter, grant writing, stuff like that.
Okay, do you have other working relationships with other counties or tribes?
I do, yep. I have a good relationship with just about every county around us, and I work in the Region Three, which is mostly the central South Dakota from Hand High to Stanley to the northern border. Kind of a square there.
I'm sorry, Tommy, but could you come up front? The other chair? This is Tommy Thompson, sorry, he's EMS for the tribe.
Who?
I just wanted him to be involved because majority of us work together.
That's quite all right.
My name is Tommy Thompson, I'm the current analyst director down at Co-Creek, also serve as a public health authority, and serve as EM as first of this year. I'm assuming this is our new county EM?
Well...
Oh, future!
He's just trying to pass it off because I ask him.
Really, get to go through this. Yeah.
But I just want us to have a good working relationship, and, you know, whenever we try to do something for Buffalo County, it's always the tribe and the county, you know, so there is no separation. We're all members of the county.
Kind of maybe I'm going to go over your program because I think most people don't know how to EMS before.
Well, it's a wide variety of things that we do. I'll just stand up and...
Yeah, that's fine.
They can hear me, but for the county of Hand, we're in the LMPG program, which is the Local Emergency Management Grant Program, which is put on by the state. So to be qualified for that, we have to do quite a bit of things, and we have to have it done within a reasonable amount of time, and there are some things that are time-sensitive that we have to do by certain times of the year. And so just the things that, to touch base on what we do, we do plans, emergency plans for the county. So we have a plan for hazmat, we have hazmat spill or accident. We have a PDM, which is the pre-disaster mitigation plan, which takes into account different disasters that could go on in the county, and then how to fix those, and then to mitigate that, and then we try to figure out how we fund that if, say, a culvert is washing out on a regular basis. So we put that in this plan, and then when there's available from a FEMA declaration, we can go in and we can get some money that's available for that to help repair it. So that's kind of what the PDM does. That's got to be renewed every five years, so it takes meetings like this with the local agencies, whether it's fire department, city, county, etc.
We just got ours updated last year.
Yep, and you guys just did yours, and, yeah, so that's going to be done every five years, and that usually starts two years before it's done, needs to be done, and we start having these meetings throughout the county, making sure that everything that needs to be in there is in there. Different plans that we put together, we have the LEOP, which is the Local Emergency Operation Plan, which basically states everything that needs to be done by fire departments, emergency management, all the way down to the fire, sheriff, police, if you have a police department, ambulance, hospitals, different things like that. So that basically spells out who's responding, who's doing what. And for Hand County, we have eight fire departments, six of which are in county, the other two or three are outside the county that respond to our county, so there's quite a few different agencies that we have to work with on that. We have, just for instance, we have three dams in Hand County that we have to worry about evacuation plans, so we have plans in that angle, so that's things that I work on as well. We respond to incidents, large incidences, that's one of the things I do, to be command presence there, to help get things running. I help teach people on how to do that, on what their goal or role will be, whether it's fire department chiefs or sheriff's departments, and all the way up to the commission. So my job is to come in, teach, whether it's those agencies or if it's just volunteers that are willing to step up to the plate and do that. So I work on that nonstop, because you have people that, you have turnover, people are here, then they're gone, so I always got to make sure I got people to cover those positions. The Emergency Operations Center, also known as the EOC, I train personnel for that. We do that a lot up in Hand County, especially with the blizzards we've had, so I spend a lot of time training people to do that and working right alongside our fire department and our sheriff's department, making sure we can get stranded voters off the road or just keeping the public safe and general. So our main goal is to prepare, then we respond, then there's recovery, and then mitigation. So recovery, I work with the agency, so we have the school of fire. I ran the, or my agency ran the donation center for all the donations coming in from outside the area. So those are things that we have plans for. So we have a plan for donations, we have a plan for where we're going to stage if we have a tornado, we have to bring in a bunch of resources. We have shelters. I have several different shelters throughout the county that I have to make sure I have good relationships with the people that own those buildings and that they're willing to allow the public to come in if we have to put people up and they can't stay in their homes, right? So that's part of the recovery, and that's also part of the mitigation. We work on grants. Homeland Security Grant is our main grant that we deal with every year. Just Hand County alone, in the last five years, we've brought in over $150,000 worth of money from FEMA to cover anywhere from generators to the new radio system that's coming in, to get radios for the county and all of our agencies within the county, and just different things throughout our EOC, so that we can operate, we have stuff, whether it's computers, internet access, all the way down to easel and gray res. Training, talked about training, I do a ton of that with the Incident Command Systems. Communications, that's one of my main things I work with in Hand County, is programming and keeping radio systems up and going, two-way radios on all of our fire trucks, all our ambulances. All of our law enforcement responders have either one on their hip or have one in their vehicles, so that's stuff that we work on, trying to find funding for that or just making sure that everybody has a way to communicate on emergency basis. Build relationships, so that's another thing I do throughout the state and throughout regions, is build relationships with other EMs, other responding agencies, if they need extra help, we can get that extra help. That's in a nutshell. I could have brought a whole book and went over all of it. Yeah, Tommy can relate to a lot of the stuff that he's doing, it's pretty much the same as what I do.
So you said you got money for radios last year?
Yeah.
Digital?
What's that?
Digital.
Did I get money?
Digital.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Because ours are all analog.
Yeah, so we have both systems in Hand County. We have analog, which is GHF, and then we have the digital. So we have two different styles of radios in our vehicles, and that last five years we've spent, I shouldn't say spent, we've put the time into our grants through Homeland Security, and we're at $90,000 that we brought in on bringing radios that we didn't have available.
I can't remember the last grant we brought in.
Wes, can I ask you, are you guys' radios compatible to do digital? I've heard that supposedly some of these radios are, two of them are.
We looked at two of them that are Motorola that possibly are.
Possibly, okay. No, I just wanted to know because I had heard that, so, okay. When would be the next grant be available?
It'll be next, this one came out in January, so it'll be December, January.
Next year, okay. Thank you.
What counties are in your EM district that you share your pot of money with that comes in?
Okay, so you're saying we could merge into it? Yes. I think this pot of money, I don't know, thirty-four or not. So too, Wayne had a question on what counties are in the region that Hand County is in, and we're in Region Three, which is all the yellow. And I know it's tough to see, but I'll leave it out if anybody wants to take a look at it. But the way the system works, if Buffalo County chooses to merge with Hand County, and then Hand County also is ingredients with it, Buffalo would merge into Region Three, and we'd become one district. Same, similar to what you got with rural.
Does that go over to here?
What's that?
What's the...
Yeah, so Stanley County and Hughes are in our district.
Thank you.
And the pot of money, like, yeah, I don't know how much, if it's split evenly or what the formula is. I do know we had $260,000 this year that was split out between all them counties in one way or another. So, I do know that I was awarded about $14,000 for radios, and then another $14,000 for the school.
So you do that as a group, you get together and kind of you vote on what projects you're going to fund that are fundable. I mean, that money's earmarked, how you can spend it, correct?
Right, so so much has to be spent on law enforcement, so much, and then after that it can be spread out. Law enforcement is the big key, so much of it has to be spent on that. And sometimes Homeland Security can decide some different parameters each year if they want to change it. Originally, when we did the radios, they were only going to allow us to do so many, and then they realized how much trouble we'd be in if they waited until last minute at $2,600 a radio. And we have 35 of them in the county, and we needed 45, but we were allowed to get 35 of them, so now every year I'll add those on and try to get them covered. So what we do is, all them EMs in those counties, we get together for a meeting, and all the applications are sent in, and then we get a list of everybody in our county that sent in an application. So for Hand County this year, it was the sheriff's office, my office in the Miller School District. So then I have to go in as an EM and determine which one is priority, so then I make those phone calls and find out a little bit about why do you need this stuff? And then we prioritize them. So this year, my school was prioritized as number one, and the radios were number two just for the fact that we did get 35 radios over the last five years. So what we do is we go through, and each county has their priority number one, and then we talk about those. So if we can fund those wholly, we do that. And then we start going on to number two, and then a lot of them will take a partial payment. So that's where we were with the radios. I actually applied for 10 radios and I got five, so I just told them I'll take five for this year, they'll get me by, and then next year I'll apply for more. In a nutshell, that's how it works, and we hash it out at a table and find out who's the most deserving and needs it the most, and then, like this year, a couple of the other people that asked for money said, you know what, we would rather have it all if we can wait until next year, if so-and-so can have their money and they get it back here.
I do, I'm 90% sure mine's upgradable, and I have another one that possibly is, but I have one that isn't that'll need to replace, so hopefully I don't have to get one. I have a bunch of radios.
Where did you go through?
I went, I use Kenwood, and I go through Dakota Electronics out of every. The two most common radios that are used in South Dakota are Motorola and Kenwood, and there's only so many dealers that deal with them, so. With the new program, within a couple of years, you'll start to see these other smaller companies coming in, and they have the ability to be on our system. The old system, only Motorola and Kenwood have the ability. It's an old Motorola system, and Governor Jankow decided at the time that we were going to keep that, so really, we've been paying for something that nobody else in the world uses for about 15 years, and now they've come up with the money to move on, and everybody else in these cases is on this P25. So they're able to buy different brands of radios for less price than Motorola and Kenwood's. And the only reason why Kenwood even got in the deal is because the state required that they couldn't monopolize, so they had to have two different sound. The whole lot goes into it, but I won't worry about that stuff.
So is there anything that you can add to that, that the tribe does that maybe...
The tribe's eligible for all of that money also, plus it's, you may give it cents because we're considered a governmental agency also, so we have the ability to go after direct funding at the federal level instead of state level also. So there's a little bit more pot of money, but kind of touch on the P25 project, it's a national program now that any federal funding for radios all have to be P25 compliant, meaning, one of these days, we're all going to get to that level where we're all on the digital network. And in rural South Dakota, it's really lacking just because of the lack of funding for it. But like you said, little baby steps, and we'll all get there someday. You know, just like the upcoming grants that are coming up due is, the mosquito grant opened up yesterday, closes on the 1st of June, but, you know, if you do come on board, you know, Buffalo County has been the recipient of that along with the tribe for years. Also, we're having problems with our tribal county 911 pre-SAP abilities, you know, I don't know what Hand County uses as their pre-SAP.
We use Huron.
Huron, okay. I think right now Buffalo County is with Davidson County?
No, it's the tribe.
Oh, with the tribe, huh? Okay.
Remember that King lady?
Yeah.
Was supposed to go on this like three times.
We're supposed to have a meeting at the end of the month with her. The tribe is actually looking at trying to develop their own pre-SAP station, center, call center, and that's where the meeting with Maria, Mariah King, came in, is supposed to be at the end of the month. Also, you know, this P25 is great, but the tribe's running into problems right now with activating their warning sirens. When we upgraded, we lost the ability to activate, so now we're waiting on wait time to reprogram the radios. So that's something to think about, you know, ahead of time. I don't know how Buffalo County activates theirs.
Or siren? We have a siren?
We don't have any. You don't have any? I thought there was one.
That's the radio tunnel, it's like...
There used to be one, all right.
So that's why those sirens aren't going off?
Yeah.
But do you, what kind of phones do you have, or what kind of radios do you have?
We got all P25 digital compatible radios that the feds purchased and updated, you know, along with the Bureau and the tribe follows suit. Also, there's P25 radio projects with the state. I don't know if the fire's quite up there, the law's up there, but EMS, they have a digital radio project going on right now, where they provide every licensed ambulance service with a number of radios for each unit, and that's in the making there. I don't know if the fire's following suit or not, but...
EMS ambulance is able to get the free ones from the state, but the rest have to go elsewhere.
And that's pretty much, we have a pretty close working relationship with our past county EM. Usually what's good for one county is good for the rest of the counties in the state, you know. The state kind of prioritizes their projects per year, so they make it available to, you know, the whole county and tribe at the same time, so.
Well, you've probably worked with Tommy before or not?
Like I said, I re-joined this position back in January.
Oh.
So I'm still catching up to speed myself, but prior to that, I was a tribal EM since 2000, no, 1998 to 2008.
Okay.
So I was there for a little while in the beginning, and worked successfully with Catherine, you know. There's a lot of grant money out there that we established our county warning sirens with that Homeland Security got. We got a fire hall here for the county, and also the tribe follows suit with some grants also. So, you know, it don't...
Tornado shelters, you got tornado shelters.
Tornado shelters and different things established across the county. And also, you know, the bottom half of Hand High Hughes County, all part of my reservation also. So I mean, there's a working relationship with all the surrounding EMs also, but we're majority located in Buffalo County.
Okay, thank you very much for coming.
What's the process to proceed?
The county currently has a contract with鲁 We're both considering terminating that early. When would you be able to...
The earliest we could do it, we do July 1st, which would be a quarter break. Ideally, we go on fiscal year, which is October, that would be ideal, but it could be done by July 1st if both commissioners can agree.
Did I hear correctly, and you say you're not currently doing it with any other county?
No, just Hand County is the only county I have.
So you don't have a current contract with anyone?
No, I am employed by Hand County.
Okay. This arrangement, would it involve contracting through Hand County or...
Yes, it'd be similar to what you already have. It would be, you'd contract Hand County to provide the services, and that would be drawn up by our state's attorney and be passed on to your state's attorney to review and then...
That's me. Well, I think those are the primary questions I would have for them. I don't know who your state's attorney is.
Elton Anson.
Okay, yeah.
So he doesn't even know about it yet until we get to the point to...
Well, that was what I was going to ask. Have your commissioners discussed doing this at all?
Yes, they have. I brought it to their attention last month, and they gave me the blessing to move forward and meet with you guys this month, and then I will go back, and they're in session right now, and I will be at the tail end of theirs, and I will relate what we talked about today.
Okay.
So I guess if there's decisions made, I'll relate that, or whatever, whatever needs to be passed on.
You have any more questions? Rex, you got any?
I'm not. I went to the meeting and then, but should we do something to proceed or just say, think about it or what?
I don't know, I have the idea of him presenting, I think we can kick it around a little while and find out what our contract with鲁 County says.
Yeah, make sure we're all right on our contract and get all that kicked around.
Because we still got a couple months.
I'm just going to say I'm favorable.
It looks favorable, yeah. They're not ready to proceed voting yet. Let's kick around the contract.
So probably what I would say is that, being you don't make a decision this month, and if it's going to be done in June, it'd be awfully tough to go to July starting date, so it's still, it might have to be October, which is fine, I just, so you're aware with that.
So our contract with you ends the end of September then?
No.
Well, the contract runs to September, however, they are willing to terminate here.
They know they are.
Yeah.
I'm saying it diplomatically.
Yeah. Understand, we'll take that under advisement.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming.
Yes, thank you.
If we could, I know you guys already accepted the agenda, but there were two things to add to the agenda. So we could amend the agenda. We need on 11C, treasure, and this came for Anita, for the kiosk or however you want to say it. And then on 12D, Derek Zastro called me yesterday afternoon and asked that we maybe discuss burn ban.
Yeah.
So you'll see I put burn ban on there on 12D.
Right, I see.
So, okay, so if we could amend those.
Anita made a motion to, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Colonial Life representative.
You guys, he brought cookies.
Well, I tried to make sure everybody's sweet. I guess I'll just have a seat real quick. I got a couple things to pass out to y'all. You, Rex?
Yes. I should sit second here. So I'm Stephen Melnick. I'm with Colonial Life, voluntary benefits. We have a, we do, I've been introducing employer paid benefits, which is from each county seat or each city office. Where I started with actually Turner County and Parker about a year back where they had a commission, I met with them. They wanted to pay for life insurance for their employees. So out of the eight I've done so far, Turner was my first. Hand was just recently here in January where he came from, Hand. But it's two dollars for employees to have, twenty-four dollars per year per employee for a ten thousand dollar life insurance program. So, but it has come from the county's budget, so it's employer paid. What that, what that does for employees, it offers them something. I don't know about you guys, but employees are just kind of hard to get these days. So even for myself, so they're not just like on the wall and just sticking there. So, so we're giving back to the employee some kind of a benefit that is very minimal cost. It's two dollars a month, twenty-four dollars per year for a ten thousand dollar life insurance. As long as you're employed by Buffalo County. So total expense I can see in the future and now would be two hundred and forty dollars per year. So I know it's a lot, so hold on your hats. So a couple, a pair of boots for two hundred and forty bucks a year. But just saying that's what the expenses are taking. But you're, the really, the big thing about it is it offers a lot of voluntary benefits because it lowers all your other coverages for the employees. For example, vision, dental, more life if they want to choose from accident, cancer, heart stroke, sickness programs. There's a lot of programs that get offered to them because of the employer paid piece. So it lowers all the cost of things for them. So, but the voluntary stuff, that's their side of the things, I think, from the county. Just the, the GTO, which is guaranteed term life coming from the Buffalo County to the employee. So that's basically why I'm here, just to introduce you to that. Real quickly about myself, this is my thirtieth year in benefits in August. Three years with Colonial now in August. So kind of how where I'm at, I used to, used to do individual health and life, now I just do groups with Colonial. So other background about me, I was, I was a Marine in the Gulf War. Yay.
Thank you.
So, and then basically I do a lot of traveling, a lot of meetings. But I really specialize the public sector with the GTO, the guaranteed term life, kind of a couple bucks per month for employees. Yeah, so that's basically what I'm here for. So basically just one of your blessings on something for in July because of the fact that that's when your turnover for benefits is, right? So the EIN numbers, anything you need from a county standpoint, which is basically it's a voluntary piece of it. The GTO piece of it has to, different column, it comes in as a payment from Buffalo County saying, hey, here's your turn, twenty-four dollars a month for us to have life insurance with all employees. So that's basically what I'm here for.
Do you have a part in?
Yeah, I've talked to him.
We're good about that. So I just need your blessing on where we stand point as far as. Well, the reason I'm here at this meeting is because sometimes it takes a little preparation for that to get in place for a package of benefits. And so we need to kind of see where we're at way ahead of time, so.
And we talked about possibly ten employees, so well, I know we possibly have another employee coming in, so that would be.
Yeah, so.
Kind of where we're at in regards to that. So we decided to do that. We probably do it next month.
Yeah, so the enrollment, you know, we give a lot of time for that because we always miss people because time, everybody's here a certain week. So we give a whole thirty day span for enrollment purposes for all employees. But yeah, there's questions to me about Colonial, about myself, about what I'm trying to accomplish here for the GTO or anything like the dental. You guys have a great dental option here with us because our, our network is in Westington Springs. Gosh, that's really far away, but anyway, but it's nice to have, to go, yeah, to go to a dental office and get everything paid for from us, which is nice. So there's some nice benefits with Colonial being in Buffalo County. So other questions you might have is like I was, I wrote down some that you might have, like employees can opt in, out as she chooses, he chooses. A lot of these things will be pre-taxed because it's a public sector or county. But you guys have any like questions for me as far as off the top of your guys' head or anything like that or?
You send me pictures of something, I'll just chat over to you.
Yeah, just really nice to visit, meet you guys. I did, like she said, I did bring some Eileen's cookies if you ever had those. Those are pretty, pretty like dang right, dang right, pretty good, you know, it's like mama slopping cookies, you know. But, but nice to visit with you all and.
Age isn't a factor in it, old guy.
What's that?
Age doesn't come into the price.
No, that's what's needed, about two dollars per, per employee per month is when I did Hand County, it was in January, I'll explain it. I had two people that were well into their seventies. So, you know, they still got the two dollar life, even though they're. Yeah, so there's no, if you're eighteen or you're sixty-eight.
I don't know why you're playing the bet.
She knows I meant. But yeah, just as far as that goes, I really, like I said, I'm just trying to expand my markets, but it's just really nice to have, you know, work with counties because you guys. It's fun to be in Gerard County and with her over there in Buffalo with him up there and then you down here. Then Jones County, that's in June for me, so I'll be in enrollment June, so I'm doing that now for Jones County. So it's just kind of neat, so, but anyway, nice to meet you and you, I'm forgetting your names.
Dawn.
Dawn, and you are?
Deneen.
Deneen, Dawn, and Rex. And back there in the back?
I'm Dave.
The overseer, Dave?
Yep.
This is my only chance to be a judge.
You're sitting up on high, I just didn't know. I feel like oversee everything, so, yeah. Again, a pleasure. Thanks for everybody having me.
Thank you.
I appreciate you having me. Thanks again.
Director of Equalization meeting update.
Okay, we met today at eleven. We had three appeals. One appeal that was voted on at the last meeting, because eleven was finished, there were two others that were heard this morning. One that resulted in a change that'll take place. Some buildings that weren't moved with property that was sold. Another one, there'll be no change. We voted on that today. And was I missing something? I think that's it.
Weed and pest meeting update.
Okay, we met today at twelve-thirty. We reviewed the. Reviewed the right-of-way spraying. We come to the decision that I would reach out to John Fanning to maybe utilize our truck, his services. To see if he would be up to spraying all the road ditches from fence to shoulder, the whole thing. Tanner and I had met and we went up and looked at some ditches, shoulders that were pulled in, some bare spots broadly, weeds starting in there. We expressed the urgency of maybe spraying at least the primary roads from the fence, the whole thing. So we talked about that. I'll reach out to John, see if he would entertain that. He gave me a rough idea, I mentioned, for spraying, spot spraying, which is what he did in twenty-twenty-one. He spent fourteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. And he's figuring this year to spot spray is fourteen K, so I'll reach out.
Just labor.
That's, I believe, everything. Twenty-six hundred, he estimated in milestone. That's from my notes this morning with my phone, so. We do have some roads that need to be sprayed full, full ditch, so.
And please put in there, May eighth is the final day for.
Yes, we talked about the notice that was published. For those that don't want their right-of-way sprayed, they must notify us in writing by May eighth and we'll put them on the list. We do remind them that they are responsible for weed control. The notice pretty much says it all, so it was printed in the paper. And we also talked about the noxious weed list, the weeds that we have on there or the absence of any thereof. We talked about Palmer amaranth and the advantages or disadvantages to having it on the list. So I think we, it was some good discussion in regard to that and so that's where that's at. Right now, we have musk and plumeless on the local noxious list. We can enforce, my vision in the beginning was to get an effective list that we could, let's see some results. Let's have some successes before we go clutter up the list with anything we can't control. So we know we can control musk, so let's see some results.
Thank you. Okay, public input, Glenn. You're a.
I was just going to make a comment. I've been coming to these meetings for over fifty years. Kind of shows my age here. And this is a local county, it's always been an informal meeting and a formal meeting, you know, public input back and forth. But Buffalo County has always had the reputation for something going on. Basketball players that set the time limits on sports, you know, and dances. But lately, we're getting a reputation, everybody's buying the paper to see what the actual amount of our pressure means. We don't need this. And Dave said it quite well. You know, we need a little respect back and forth here. And I, we farm, been farming ever since nineteen seventy. We've got the Isaac Waplin wards, we farm for habitat, for wildlife. Disagree a little bit with the state and how they are approaching their weed controls. I've been a commercial applicator, we sprayed over several hundred thousand acres. We went through the field mine weed decreasing, then we went through the Canadian thistle. It's easier to stop something when it first starts. And we're getting a new batch of weed in that's getting chemical resistant. And we don't want to let them get started, we got to stop them. And I'm just here as a controlling landlord and just, just my opinion. But, but we need to be more civil with these meetings. And that's all I got to say, so.
Thank you, Glenn. Carol Klein. Please stand up.
First of all, thank you for the commissioners for allowing me to speak. I am speaking on behalf of some of the taxpayers and my husband showed up, which I didn't think he was going to. But anyway, first of all, I'd like to say, whatever I'm saying here now, I have no personal vendetta against the commissioners. I have no personal vendetta against Dave or any of the employees. I am only here talking, offering a constructive suggestion in which I hope that the commissioners will at least think about. Because it's not only me, there are other people that are feeling the same way. As a taxpayer here in Buffalo County, we can see on the outside, we're not so close. We can be objective from the outside, looking in. We can see where some of our tax dollars are being, not misused, but they could be used in other places better than they are being used. The first place that I'm going to, and I'm going to go down a couple different things if you'll bear with me. The first thing I'm asking, I'm saying in here is, I'm going to start with the auditor's office. How long do they get to be on, not probationism, the word, orientation? Now, she's been here and I'm not picking on her, I don't care if it was Mrs. Sandkloss, I don't care who it is. I'm talking about the role, the position. A year and a half and you still have got another person there. Now, I have, just because I was in Ousie and I did know a couple people in a, in a different county, long ways from here. Not, you guys wouldn't even know who they were. I asked them, have you guys gotten, in the last three years, has there been more work put on the auditor's office? And they said, no, not unless you were doing computer systems and putting the software in and doing a bunch of different changes. So really, there wasn't. So when I look at this situation from being here before in the past, I knew that Elaine Wolf was here for thirty-plus years. She had a pencil and a piece of paper and she never missed a report. She had her work done efficiently by herself. When you went to her office, you got the answer from her right now. She could get the answer for you. She didn't get mad if she went from the auditor's office, she went across the road to the, across the alley to the registered D's. She could give you the answer. Now, we're not really sure if we're going to get those answers yet or not, but I haven't been in it, but this is group, group thoughts. But anyway, I guess I'm saying here is, you had Yvette, when she was here, she asked for a helper. They were told, I was sat at that meeting, that was one of the meetings that I came to. If you want a helper, you get the helper all you want. She liked hiring Sherri Knippen. She said, but you will pay her all your old tax dollars, all your old feeing. At twenty-five dollars an hour, I do not know how many hours Yvette puts in because I don't know where you're paying. And I'm not picking on Yvette and I'm not picking on anyone, but I'd like to know how many hours she puts in, twenty-five bucks an hour. You figure that out. If she put in a forty-hour week, that's a thousand bucks a week, four thousand a month, take that to the forty-eight thousand. Is that, am I out of line for asking that? You don't want me to talk anymore?
No, I didn't say that. I was going to try. You got a couple minutes left, keep going.
All right, so anyway, this is just some of the feelings that we have here as taxpayers. And as taxpayers, we should be able to vent our feelings, right? Okay, thank you for, for listening. But now when we go down, now what about the hours here at the courthouse? I know of two people that came to the courthouse and the courthouse was closed. You know, last week, but I know they went away for a, a meeting. Okay, but so where were the other two people? Why, why wasn't the courthouse open? Are you aware of that?
You mean the part that one office could be open and the other one's closed because of the trust issue that nobody wants anybody to share keys? Well, we're.
And there's a reason why they don't want to share keys. Would you like to make an announcement as to why they don't want to share keys?
I don't know why they don't want.
Our three minutes is up.
Yep, I was going to say.
Why you only get three minutes?
Because it's, it's protocol.
You know, we're taxpayers, we're the ones who give you a job.
That's right.
That's why three minutes is pretty short. And what I said so far hasn't been bad, I'm just telling you.
I'm not going to. All I'm going to say is, since I've been on, that's been two years. And you can say you've talked to your auditors, but I'm also talking to a young gal that started in Kadoka and has been, the old one's been forty years. And she has said she can't believe the changes in the auditor's office. And I can give the name, you won't know them.
No, I'm not going to.
And, but there have been changes. And as far as that goes, we don't hire the auditor.
Oh, I know.
She is an elected official. So again, then, we don't have the authority.
Is that all?
You can't control the auditor.
Yeah, we can't control the auditor.
But can you control the money that's going out of the office? That's what's that. I'm not a person. The auditor would have trouble getting somebody without payment.
Can you help me?
Was it unlimited, the money they spend then?
No, there is a budget.
Excuse me. Really. The lady in the back has had her opportunity to talk. I know she wants to talk more. But we can't have people just yelling out responses all over the meeting. If you want to, if you want to talk, you want to make a statement, you're, you're entitled to be recognized and come up here and sit and. And carry on a reasonable discussion with the board. I want to compliment you, you were doing a good job. It's too bad that it's so many issues to discuss at one time. But that's the way we have to do it. But, that's the way we have to do it.
So will it always just be three minutes is all you can talk? Is that, is that right?
That's what the board is saying.
We're, we've already been here an hour, and we went through four things. We've got this whole thing to go through. Do you wanna be here till ten o'clock tonight?
No, no, let me ask you this then. Okay, what if a group of the taxpayers had a meeting with you, and we only could vent our feelings, with that, a special meeting? When, when can these people talk, is what I guess I'm asking.
You can, if, if the board chooses to have a special meeting for that purpose, they can do that.
I mean, we're not, and like I said, I'll apologize to you right now, if I offended anybody, but I had no intentions of offending anyone. Only thing I'm telling you is, as taxpayers, we would like to vent our feelings.
The thing about it is, the comments you're making now are, are fine, but we can't have the meeting go on forever.
Right, and I understand.
And if you ought to request a special meeting, you can do that.
I'm gonna feel that way happen though.
Can I ask you a question? I watch Congress in session quite a bit, and they allocate their unused time over to somebody else. I was up there for about a minute, can I give my two minutes of that lady?
Come on, you're already on the bus. Two, two minutes longer, there's a...
That's protocol.
You know, this is all new to everybody, I don't know, but we're trying to get it so that you can actually have some input, but the meeting can go on, and...
But it wouldn't be over six minutes if I talked three.
The bottom line is, if you would allow some transparency and accountability, I don't think these taxpayers would have a bit of problems, that's all I, and that's it. You want me done, I'm done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Hendricks.
I'm Mary Hendricks, and I've come for a special request from the commissioners. I would appreciate to have something published or sent to us in regard to what the budget is, and the different areas that are allocated how much. We are entitled to know how much money there is in the county, and how much is being spent.
I believe...
That's true, Mary, and it is published once a year in the paper.
In fact, we're working on next year's budget as we speak.
So, then, we know what the county paper is, it's gonna be published in, is that correct?
Yeah, it's always published in Central Dakota Times.
Okay, okay, so then we just need to purchase that.
Yes.
But, okay, but I, I have heard a lot of concern about how much money is being spent, and where is it coming from? And how are we, are we going to be able to meet all of our expenses in the year?
Very much so.
Because I don't have any record personally, I guess I did not get that paper, or did not get that...
Okay, yeah, straight up the...
But I didn't do it, no. So, but that's not a possibility, to purchase, to publish it in the paper again.
Well, well, it'd be for, I mean, we're already halfway through it.
Well, you have copies of it now.
Yeah.
All you have to do is look at what was posted.
Yeah.
But like this report...
I'm gonna get a copy of your paper with the president in the table.
But this report shows us how much money was spent, but we have no idea what the input is.
That was, that's our, those are the vouchers we have to, excuse me, approve to pay for this month.
Deb has promised to send me a copy of the paper, and I will make it available in the courthouse up here for people to look at.
Well, it should be available right there in the auditor's office.
But I, I was in finance for years and years and years, people, and I'm very uneasy about the situation in Buffalo County.
Well, I, I want to myself tell you that it's not the situation being portrayed. We are well within the budget.
Good, and, and it's been new.
Right here is a picture of the...
And the allocation, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay. That's what I'd like to see, a few seconds.
Okay, Sherry Knipman, make sure you get it back. Yeah, make sure you get it back.
I agree with Carol, on, on the fact that I'm not here to pick on anyone personally, however, I am concerned, as well as the others, about some of the monies that are being spent in the county, and some of the different budget areas that have increased substantially. And one in particular is the assistant consultant, whatever you wanna call it, that, in the auditor's office. And as they stated, we had a single auditor in that office for many years, and they were able to do the job by themselves, but now, we have Yvette, and I wanna go back to...
When you talk about Yvette, let me take in, no, none of your time, my time. Right now, she's got a machine, remember how we had to send those books off, and then they made copies for us? Well, now we got an opportunity to get a machine, we have to wait, what, two, three months? You know? We do a register of deeds, we're...
That's right now, Danita, but this isn't what's been going on since then. I'm gonna read you, out of the minutes, from the July sixth, July fifth meeting last year.
July.
Hire, they talked about hiring Yvette Iceberg for floater assistant for all positions, was discussed. Danita moved to accept Yvette as a floater assistant, no second, motion failed due to lack of a second. Then on the nineteenth of July, Auditor Morrison requested, we have a consultant review the records and come up with a concrete plan to move forward to have the treasurer and auditor reconcile each month. Yvette Iceberg will consult at twenty-five dollars an hour, she will review Dave's data, and assist the treasurer and auditor to come up with a plan for the treasurer's monthly balance sheet, and auditor's fund cash balance report to be reconciled each month. That's pretty clear?
Yeah.
Okay?
How many of those months was they reconciled?
Now...
How many months did Yvette have to work on it, though?
Now, well, that was, it was pretty clear what she was hired to do, according to, it wasn't a resolution, however, it was just discussed.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, now I'm gonna read you the catch by law. Authorization for employment of deputies and clerks. Now, there's a deputies and clerks, it's not a contract relation. But if in the judgment of the Board of County Commissioners, it shall be deemed necessary for the prompt and accurate dispatch of business in the office of the county treasurer, auditor, coroner, or registered deeds, that deputies or clerks be employed there. It shall, by resolution, fix the number of deputies or clerks to be employed, the time of employment, and the compensation which they shall receive. Now, when Yvette was hired for that position, I didn't have a problem with that particular issue, but my concern was if it would continue on, and on, and on, like it has. And that's my concern. And also, I have another concern, and that, well, it's not a concern, it's a belief, that anyone that's hired by the county, be it in this courthouse, that they should be in their office as many hours a week as they are paid for, and that should be during business hours.
So, how does the sheriff get around that, then?
I said hired, not even.
Thank you.
Davison County, I checked with them, and nobody that works in the courthouse works odd hours, they come in the business hours, everybody.
I will talk to you.
Okay.
I'll talk to you, because I told me that.
All right, let's move on, Greg Henderson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Greg Henderson, this is Lori Calment, we're with County, County District Three. I'm here to give you our annual performance report. This is something that we do every year with each county, to explain to them what we're doing, what we have done. Lloyd, I'll give you one sec, well, you were on the board last year. Basically, the report, the first page outlines a little bit about what District Three is as an organization, and for those of you in the audience that may not be familiar with us, we are a voluntary association of city, county, and tribal governments. We've existed since nineteen seventy-three, as a matter of fact, this is our fiftieth anniversary year. And this county is a member, it does not pay us a dime, John. Other counties do pay dues. The reason this county does not, is the tribal population here, the demographics and the income, allow us to get a higher federal grant rate on certain federal programs. As a result, we do not charge you dues for that. So anything we do for you is basically free of charge, outside of maybe some technical things that would require some extra costs, but most of them are free.
What do other counties pay to be in District Three?
They pay us so much per head. For example, Davison County probably pays us twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Our budget's about one point four million annually. So, in addition to dues, we get money from federal, federal and state contracts, we run a revolving loan fund, we do a lot of other things. But we are very entrepreneurial, but be, be clear, we work for cities and counties and tribes. You're our bosses. Danita is my board chairperson. So, again, we're here for you, to help you where we can. You had a gentleman here talking to you earlier about emergency services. We do the planning work for Buffalo County and the Crow Creek Sioux Tribe for pre-disaster mitigation grants, so we are already doing some of that. We are not out there responding to fires or disasters, but we help you with the behind-the-scenes work, and we would hope to continue to do that, because if you do hire Han County, don't pay for that kind of work, because it's already being done for you. And I've talked to my counterpart at Aberdeen, who does the work for Han County, and saying that they had a conversation about how we would work together, it's not gonna be a problem. So again, if Han County wants to charge you to do a PDM, or anything to do with hazard mitigation planning or grant writing, you don't need to pay for that, because we're already doing it for you. That's just my opinion, you can do what you want, but that's, there's no reason to pay for something you're giving. And we do a good job.
GIS too.
Yeah, same with geographic information.
You'll have to write that down, so you can print that.
Well, I think you won't have any trouble remembering if it's free.
Well, I know, but the officials get the...
That's what they do, don't remember.
But the si, the second page in the, in the document talks about some of these agency relationships we have, and some of the service highlights from twenty twenty-two. And again, we work for fifteen counties, so it's a pretty big, pretty big footprint. Your report's on page four. Last year, we did not have any applications that we wrote for, for this area. If you look down below there, you can see that we have done other grants in, in the past, but we did not do any this year. Our Small Business Development Center, which is free consulting for private businesses, we had two Buffalo County clients last year, historically, we've had twelve. And the SBDC, it's free, it's professional, it's highly confidential, so that if a private business, it could be any one of you folks out here, we don't deal with production livestock, but if you have a side business of some kind, and you want some help with financial projections, or trying to figure out if you're getting into the right situation financially, we can help you with that. And if you wanna go to the bank, and apply for a loan for your business, and you need projections, again, to justify the cash flow that you're thinking you're gonna get, we can help you with that. And most of the banks in this region will accept our numbers to help you get that loan. So if you look down here on twenty twenty-two work activities, right off the top, pre-disaster mitigation plan update, Danita had mentioned that earlier. Well, we, that, you're good enough for five years with that. We provided some American Rescue Plan Act registration and reporting assistance, we helped the tribe with federal program application procedures, you can go through the list. And then, right below that, our past grants that we've written that were successful, somebody mentioned West Nile, well, we helped with those. And if that's coming up, if you want our help, we'll help you again. Behind, or right below that, is previous assistance highlights, and you can see some of the things we've worked on there. So, the last part of the report is information from across all fifteen counties, on where we've been making loans, what type of businesses we've been assisting, and so on. We are here to help, we're not gonna solve all your problems, but we can serve you a lot of use in some of them. And one of the things that Lori is, I'd like to have Lori briefly explain to you this afternoon, is a program we're starting, and the livestock producers in this room might be interested in this. We received two federal grants totaling four point three million dollars, that we are available to loan out at three percent interest, for businesses that wanna start livestock processing. In other words, you wanna start a locker plant, or you wanna start something that involves the transportation of, of livestock to a plant, that maybe would qualify, we can help finance that. And this is brand new for us. Last week, I was at an economic development conference in, in Sioux Falls, and they were talking about South Dakota as a state, and what's important. They said, obviously, you all know this, agriculture's our number-one industry, but did you know that the number-two industry is eight times less impactful than agriculture? In other words, agriculture is eight times greater than the number-two industry, which is tourism in South Dakota. It's that important. So we're trying to do more to help our egg producers, make their products, you know, more value-added, do more processing in the state, help consumers afford, you know, to buy beef and pork, and this grant, I think, will help us do that. But we need to have people that are willing to start these types of operations. We were over in Westington Springs earlier today, there's apparently some talk about starting another locker over there. So again, if you have anybody that's interested in that, and Lori can give me a few more details.
What about that school was trying to put in?
If they're doing something that would involve the actual slaughter or processing of animals, we might be able to help with that.
Greg, before you leave, Sherry keeps asking us about the enhanced nine-one-one, what can you tell us?
Well, the person on my staff that's, that knows that inside and out is Sherry Redman.
Okay.
And I think he's coming up for a meeting later this month.
The lady's postponed us three times.
Oh.
So, it's been scheduled again for the end of May.
But Sherry has, has done that work for many, many counties across South Dakota, and I'm not an expert on it.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, so...
But I know we, we'll, we'll help you with the activity of doing that, but we have to work with phone companies, we have to work with your dispatching center, there's a lot more moving parts to it than just the, that part.
Thank you very much.
I do want you to know, two thousand nine, you got Buffalo County Personnel Handbook, we passed that last year, yeah.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
Okay, well, if you ever want it updated, let us know.
We did a little bit.
So Lori, do you have anything else you wanna tell about this?
No, only the fact that it is money that was granted to District Three from USDA World Government. We have two different grants, total a little over four million dollars, we've got three years to get it out. It can be used for a new startup, it could be used for someone that wants to expand, equipment, additions to a building, coolers, really, really, pretty very open. So reach out, or let your lockers know, or if somebody's interested, they can call our office, talk to myself or Teresa down there. It's kind of top priority for us to get that deployed, because once those dollars start coming back in, we can continue to use it for other projects. And three percent is really a nice rate right now, because bank rates, as you know, are going up in that seven, eight percent. And we always like to partner with our local bank partners, because we get a lot of referrals from them, they're kind of the eyes and ears out here, and they do a lot of the handholding, and then we can kind of come in and, and lend the, the lower interest money, so, yeah, just give us a...
What's the term limit, they might have missed that?
We can go, it's secured by real estate, it can go up to twenty years, so...
We're, we're pretty easy to get along with, and oftentimes, they'll, they'll renew, renew or renegotiate your loan, you know, partway through.
Right, yeah, we do, we'll do an amortization for twenty years, double limit after five, and then we can roll it over and keep on rolling.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you all, and just so you know, next year, you won't be seeing me, but you'll be seeing her.
Okay, well, happy retirement.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Greg, and them from District Three.
Thanks, Karen. Guys, I made this, I think last month I started this, there's a thing, so anybody that has questions about budgets or anything else, or any emails I'm getting from people, I mentioned this last month.
Right.
So, I know I get a lot of emails from a person or, or, so, anything that they're requesting, I stick in this book, I'll put a copy of this in this book.
And it's out in the hallway, right?
It's in the hallway, so anybody that comes and has questions, or somebody... So anybody that comes and has questions or somebody emails me and asks questions, I figure they have a question. Everybody must have a question. So I just stick it in here. So...
And it's sitting out in the hallway, I believe. Okay. Highway Superintendent Tanner. I'll start out with our fuel bids, and then you can have it. For the month of May, and this is from Total Oil, unleaded bulk price, three forty-five per gallon. Ethanol, three oh seven per gallon. Number two, dyed, three eighteen per gallon. Can I get a motion to accept that? Rex, will you second it?
Yes.
All in favor? Motion passed. Okay, Tanner.
Okay. Lately, we've been pulling, retrieving and blading all the retrievings across. Oh, cut some trees down out west. You guys ripped some fence out that ran the fence lines. We went and cut them out of there. Hopefully, by the end of the week, we'll be through all the primary roads. By tomorrow or Thursday, as far as retrieving and blading and turn around and do it again. And we're slowly picking up the driveways, whatever you want to call it, as we go along the way. And then hopefully get into routine of regular routine. And the mower tractor showed up. That's about all we've been doing, I guess. Retrieving, blading.
Is there moisture still there?
There's no moisture anywhere in the Buffalo County. Got some culverts, I guess, we got to do this summer and stuff. That list is growing quite rapidly.
Not as many true that we are repairable as maybe we'd hoped.
There's some ends that... There's a lot of ends that are repairable, but there's some that are just holes in the middle of them. We can do the old sign fix, but that don't work, so...
And you talked to Jeremy?
Yeah.
Thomas?
On that road crossing, he said he hoped the end of this week, probably first and next.
Yeah. Tanner was unaware that we branded that to him two years ago. He made it sound like he was just approved to do that.
I'll stay on a little bit more.
Thank you.
How about deciding?
I just got to call that guy. There's some roads that we talked about, throw a minimum on them. That way, we can still mow if we want. Like we shouldn't for fire hazard on some of them, so.
Good.
There is one applicant that came through. So if we're on ten E, there was one application that came through. I don't know if you guys want to discuss interviews. I did ads to all the papers.
Oh, okay.
I did three separate, that were connecting areas. And so we have that one applicant.
We can maybe look at that executive session and make a decision so we can move on.
Then you guys had asked for surplus?
Yes. We discussed it, and it didn't get finished at the last meeting. We want to surplus the challenger and the mower. And you said there's an old mower that's of absolute no use. We can go to... Chisholm Peterson got ahold of me, I believe. He's got an auction, June fifth. And we put the... We surplus the truck a couple of years ago on one of his auctions. And it works really good. I mean, it falls within codified law and everything. It's... That way, anybody can bid whatever they want to do. We've just got to get it in to Chisholm's. He has it at his... What am I trying to say? At his site there in Chamberlain. It's on the highway road. He's got a big... Does a big spring and fall auction. So if that's what you guys want to do or if you want to take bids, but this would be the easy way.
I'd make a motion to take it to Chisholm's place. That and the mower and the stuff that goes with it.
The tractor has a mower, side mower.
And then there's the mower off.
Back three-point mower. And then there's an old, old side mower that's basically parts.
So do I have a second?
So we know what it's going to take tonight for the second.
Yep. All in favor? Thank you. An IMAG update, a couple of things. Josh from IMAG, we've been visiting the bridge on the Steve Larson Road. He... August first will be the deadline for the federal and state grants. We hope that we can get the federal grant. Because if we do, we will be liable, or our part of it will be eighteen point nine percent. And the federal will pay the rest. If it's a state, it's eighty-twenty. Either way, it's good. However, the estimate that he gave me is one point, almost one point seven million. And the problem or the downside of the state bid, or the state grant, is it stays with this one point seven. That if by the time they build the bridge, it goes up to two million, it doesn't matter. The state only pays the eighty percent of the one point seven. Whereas the federal pays whatever the end cost is. So he applies for both of them in case the federal one doesn't go through. So that's where this bridge is at. The other thing that he suggested, we've got five other bridges in our county that were built in nineteen seventy-five that are getting to be in poor shape. And his suggestion is that he starts the preliminary on them. And that has to be done by August first because there's so many state regulations on these preliminaries. Then he can start to work on the actual cost of the bridge so that we're ahead of the game. However, again, it's not free. It's going to range anywhere from forty to eighty thousand to do the preliminaries. And again, the state will pay eighty percent, will be responsible for twenty. But I can't give the yes or no. That's got to come from the board. But his suggestion is we didn't have a wheel tax, so we couldn't get these fundings. Now we've got the wheel tax. We can go ahead, we can get these fundings. And if we stay ahead of it, we can get on these bridges as soon as they can instead of where the condition of this one at Larson's is and have to be waiting three or four years.
Does that preliminary deal good for like ten years?
It's good. Once he does it, it meets the state regulations. He can use those preliminaries to go on to do this. So the other thing, and he just emailed us to Tanner, our bridges are due for inspection, I believe it's July. He's going to come to be at the June meeting. Josh will be here at the June meeting to give us these updates. But basically, for him to come and inspect our bridges, give us a report, it's going to be thirteen thousand, eight hundred and forty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents.
That's a year no matter who.
And that's going to be no matter who uses. But they are due for inspection this July. And IMAG is who we have used through the years and have been happy with. So I need a motion on the... To go ahead with the preliminary, I need a motion if you guys approve this.
For your preliminary, you can do all five of them?
Yes, he'll do all five of them. All five that were built in nineteen seventy-five.
Because we had a poor...
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
That's part of our money deal. All the bridges at once, they start causing...
Well, that's why if we do the preliminary, we can do one at a time. Instead of all five and lots of big cameras.
Move to do the preliminary?
Yes.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, motion passed.
Now, can I ask you a question after your motion? On that Larson Bridge, you know, it's taken quite a while. It's posted. We've been running around the Yang Valley. Is there any way a guy can shore that up? It might take two or three more years. Is there any way a guy can do something there to...
I can ask Josh. I can't answer that.
Guys, I know there's people using it. But, you know, there's an instance up my hearing. A couple, three years ago, a truck went through a bridge I was posted. Turned ugly for the truck owner. And so we don't want to...
Right. See, initially, he... IMAG didn't realize we had the wheel tax. So when they sent me the estimate, it was four hundred and forty thousand. And that was to put in two of those big square culverts. Well, after I got that and I called them and I said, hey, we've got the wheel tax and the five-year plan. He said, well, then I can change everything. And it took him, you know, a couple of months to get me this.
Well, that was two square culverts. Would they be covered in a hundred percent or county?
No, that was a hundred percent county paid for.
Hundred, okay. Because really, talking to different engineers, that's kind of a correct way to do it, but...
There's something about the water flow through there that the hydrology report doesn't support that. So... And I'm not smart enough to...
But you're getting back to our budget. You know, we don't want to get the county and pay twenty percent on a two-ninety-dollar project. Our budget's going to go right out the window.
This is next year.
I'd say one would bother, but if you have another bridge...
But even a couple hundred thousand dollars out, it's going to trim us down.
Well, and that's why, like I said, that's really why we hope to get the federal one. Because we all know what everything's doing.
Because that bridge has been torn. You know, it's been rebuilt once. We had to pull clear around the Yang Valley all summer. That's been just like less than ten years ago. Now we're looking at the same deal.
It was, you know, because that's what them guys that come down from here, they bid at a hundred and forty thousand to patch it up, basically. And I think that's what you'd be looking at now to make it usable for a while, so.
See, and then the other thing that they said on the federal guidelines is they really like to hire local, if at all possible. But one thing, they use the Davis Bacon, it's Buy American provisions, anything manufactured in the USA. However, when they sold our cement plant, it's Mexican-owned. And he... At that meeting in Pierre, he said that gravel, rock, and cement can possibly be exempt from the Buy American because of that scenario. So... But they like to come in, especially on the... If we get the federal money, to work with the local people as close as they can to home to support them. So... But no, that's the deal. It was a hundred and some odd thousand to Band-Aid it or these cement bridges for four hundred and forty thousand.
So which... We're looking, how many years on the road, maybe?
I think probably...
Two, it sounded...
At least two. By technically, all the funding and the... Probably three, I think, the way I understand it, from like now, maybe.
So, you know, it's... That's why I think it's really important to do these preliminaries so we're ahead of it instead of behind like it has been. So... But anyway, I need a motion to approve to have IMAG inspect the bridges.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I sign under you there, Tanner, or how?
I'm not sure, I guess. Is that an email or a...
And we'll need to be...
Okay. Highway updates.
Tanner, you gave that?
Yep. Any other? Did anybody somewhere up? Okay. DOE, RAVE, N-911.
I did, I forgot. There's a meeting or whatever, June seventh and eighth. From what I understand, it's about... The first day's about learning what grants would be available to the highway department. Like South Florida, El Capo will be there, the road guys. That's about all I know.
When was it?
June seventh.
June seventh and eighth.
Pierre.
So Wednesday and Thursday.
And you said there was no cost.
There's no cost for highway superintendent.
So you said Pierre, you're going to Pierre? Where are you going?
Pierre.
And he didn't need a motel? Because he's got a camper up there. He was willing to stay.
Should charge.
It's a mile away, so I figured he just won't use it.
Well, I'll move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Tanner. Okay, Lee.
Okay. I think we covered everything, the DOE, weed and pest and so forth. So the first thing on the eleven A, the grants. Remember our ARPA funds approval totaling three hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. We need a motion. I think you probably have a copy of that. It's time to move our second half transfer that was received and in the bank December nineteenth. So it's time to move that over from two-nine-five to Jennifer.
Going to Jennifer?
And that's what our state auditor... Yep.
All right, I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay. Second part, LATCF funds. Of the hundred and one thousand, we have so far received the first half, once again, fifty-one thousand, four, seventy-eight, eighty-nine. That needs to move from two-ninety to the general fund now.
What does the acronym stand for?
Local Assistance Tribal Consistency Fund.
Okay, so this is the one that we can basically kind of move for tribal or whatever. So we have that...
As long as we put it into general, then we'll be able to pick your hand up.
And can use it for anything?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carried. Do you know when the second half of those funds will come?
I think it's twelve months after the first. I'm not... I can't recite it right here, but I think that sounds right. So there's another fifty-one thousand coming. Courthouse security, I've reached out to Onsite for an additional camera for inside the courthouse, as requested. I have yet to receive anything back, so...
You don't know... You don't have a cost or anything?
No. No, I haven't... They haven't gotten back to me yet. So let's see.
If that does come about, is there a cost that you guys want to... Since we already have the four cameras.
Just hook in that one.
Is there a cost that you guys would approve, let's say, keep? I don't remember that, but I'm just kind of proactive if they want to...
What do you think, Dan? You've already got cameras with them. We're just adding, asking for one in the hallway here, remember?
You're asking for them just to authorize a price?
Correct. And so let's say if they call and they say they can add one more camera in for two hundred dollars.
Isn't that... Do we have to make a motion on that or is that...
Technically, you don't.
It's not above that dollar amount.
Yeah, there's a dollar amount.
Yeah. Well, you have to authorize it, but you don't have to bid it.
Right. So if you want to make a motion to just have them, go ahead. That's totally up to you and Rex.
Otherwise, we really don't need one. We just ask them to come in and put one in.
Right.
Would you feel more comfortable with a motion?
I wasn't the one that asked for this, so I think you'd have to ask the person that wanted it. I feel comfortable with it.
Well, when we sat here last week, we decided to add one camera.
Yeah.
So I think we're all...
What's the cameras cost that we got already?
If you don't actually have an idea what it's going to cost, just as well...
It's animal on what we do for a year for the four cameras.
Just adding one more camera to the camera we already got outside.
What's the forward cost?
A hundred bucks, I think, for the whole year. It's... I'd have to look for a hundred.
That's for the technical support.
Right.
So, well, if you want a motion, Rex?
Well, second.
All in favor?
Make sure it's pointed at Janice's office. How do you get it on your telephone app?
You get an app, put on your phone. You call and get their app. I had it put on when we had no auditor and Janice was the only one here. I called Insight and had the app put on my phone. And I could check it, well, at home, any place I was, when Janice was the only one here.
They don't let anybody go?
No, they won't let anybody. But it's very easy to do. I don't have it anymore because I switched phones. So we have a full staff, so I do... But it's, it's very easy to do. I don't have it anymore, it's a switched phone, so we have a full staff, so I do move it when I got a new phone.
I just wondered.
That's all I have.
Oh, we have a C on here. I know it's private, but that's for you.
Janice, can we do her next one?
Yeah.
Cause we're doing auditor, register of deeds and treasure, right, right?
Yeah.
So we have treasure on. Could you ask Janice to come with us? Check, I just hear myself.
When did you start working that much ago?
Hey Jess.
When you start working on your.
I have a question. So, the lady that you called at Department of Revenue, where we were talking kiosks, what did she tell you?
She said you need to contact them. It's Ashley Zilberberg.
It's actually what?
Ashley Zilberberg.
Okay, I have talked to her, and I know she told you. What is, what did she tell you?
So what'd she tell me?
You told me first.
Well, you said you knew what you told me.
She told, she took you out. Well, that's why I brought you in. I'm sorry, I can hear myself talk, cause I got my. She also told me that she talked with you?
Yes.
And she talked about a kiosk, and the kiosk itself is about a hundred and twenty thousand?
But she didn't say that. She said they don't have any available on.
Well, this one said that she, we could get one, if we would pay for it. That's a hundred and twenty thousand straight out, because we missed the deadline when the state actually put those in for us. And then it would cost us an additional, maybe twenty thousand a year for maintenance and upgrade.
See, she didn't go in the price.
But what she did tell me was that when she talked to you about that, she told you about the possibility of doing a satellite office.
The other day?
The other day, whenever you talked to this lady. I'll have to find my phone. But anyway, the satellite office, she said, would cost considerably a lot less, which we both know. And as far as any kind of equipment she would need, Department of Revenue would be willing to put that in, and motor vehicles would put that in for you, meaning the printer. And the computer line, or whatever it is that you needed. So, we have some time. I know we're working on the upcoming next year's budget. I mean, this isn't gonna happen overnight, so. Maybe if we can kinda see what that, that might lead, as opposed to a kiosk. I mean, lady said she came the other day and, uh, offices was closed. I know we went to training, and I thank you for going, okay? But it is an awful distance to come over here and sometimes. And so we were asking for a kiosk so that, you know, you can go to, um, Lynn's Super Value in Pierre, you can go to some of those other places, and you get your license right there, your tags. But we missed the deadline for that, cause we could've had one. So I went about this other way. But I do like the idea of a satellite office, so I just wanted to bring that up so that. We can talk about that and maybe think about next year's budget.
Okay.
Okay?
She didn't, I didn't recall her saying anything about a satellite office.
Okay.
So then you'd have somebody.
Because I didn't think you would be favorable to them. She said that she thought she were, so I wonder who she talked to then. Later.
Okay, auditor and registered deeds.
There was one hospitalization, I think the only person that didn't see this was maybe Rex. So do you wanna see the hospitalization, Rex?
Is that a notice or just a?
Nope.
Can I, can I also agree that I did get ahold of IHS, and was trying to set a meeting up with Dave, um, Chris. The IHS, the health part of it, and Kathy.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Third person.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Because we had all of this before. Okay, and it's been ten years, so maybe we have to reiterate and bring it all back together again. So there will be a need to address some of those.
Just go to notices.
Yeah.
Cause she wanted to know who was that we had sent over. Cause they're not getting notifications. So we need to form a communication again.
Okay, the treasurer and auditor, street court.
And it's just the second, so we do not have Aprils, neither Janice nor myself have it done. And we, we've been updated. I mean, we've been pretty good at doing it at that. Meeting right there, but we're just not able to do it, so we'll have to do the, if you guys have a.
Right.
Upcoming meeting or next month, so.
Okay.
Uh, the checks and payroll report, this is just a, a courtesy report, so I think you guys all have it, and I said it in the back.
What's, uh, Jeff Barlow? I thought he was gone a long time ago, wasn't he?
So that's a year. This was for last month.
Huh?
This was for last month. That would've been April.
So he was gone, but I saw him to pay him because it comes through.
So he paid for money he worked in March?
Yes.
And then, like I said, Derek called me yesterday and requested to go have a hospital burn ban, so I would had updated exactly what we did the last time, so if there's changes or, or anything else.
A resolution to provide temporary burning ban in Buffalo County, whereas Buffalo County is dedicated to taking steps to protect the health and safety of all residents. Of the county and all property within the county, and whereas vegetation has not greened up as yet, indicating that the risk of a dangerous fire is very high. And we're asked for purposes of this resolution, open burning shall be defined as any outdoor fire, including but not limited to campfires, warming fires. Charcoal grill or prescribed burning of fence, rosefields, wildlands, trash and debris. This resolution excludes fires contained within liquid fueled or gas fueled stoves, fireplaces within all buildings. Charcoal grill, grill fires at private residences and permanent fire pits or fire grass grates located. Unsupervised developed public grounds and campgrounds. And now therefore it be resolved that Buffalo County Commission enacted this resolution. On the emergency basis and impose a ban to prohibit or restrict open burning in tour, in order to protect public health and safety. And present to South Dakota cert, cert, codified law seven dash eight dash twenty-eight eighteen. And be it further resolved, the ban will be in place until the danger of fire lessens and the commission takes action to remove the ban, which we looked at in August twenty twenty-three. Be it further resolved that the fine not to exceed five hundred dollars and or thirty days in jails. Suppression of costs of extinguishable shame fire, including response fees mutually aid from other agencies or fire departments. Reimbursement to governments for suppression efforts and compensation to the firefighters for time lost from their employment.
Can I put in an August, just?
That's fine.
I wasn't sure where to put that part, so.
No, we can always, uh, change that. Now, let me put it up. This is for Aug, to August, but it can be revisited.
It's supposed to start raining this weekend.
Yeah. You know what, let's put this burn down and hope it does.
Maybe let's put it, yep. I'm willing to put it down.
Okay, I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Done, Neil's signed it. It's your legal day.
Uh, okay.
May twenty-ninth is the, it's a legal holiday.
Okay, uh, yeah, May twenty-ninth, legal holiday is Memorial Day.
That's one of our holidays.
Yep, yep, that's one of our holidays. Uh, you, you wanna?
Oh, I'm gonna take number fourteen off right now.
Okay, Anita's gonna take number fourteen off. Uh, discuss keys.
Figure these.
The keys, I guess.
Send that to you since you're still a little tired.
My understanding was you took care of that at your last move.
I think a wet move.
Okay.
So just scratch it as well?
Yep.
I didn't hear what. You have key deals, keys to offices.
Yeah, I think we took it.
You gotta have a master key for everything except the sheriff's office.
Um, upcoming events and workshops. May eleventh is a district meeting in Flankington, I believe, I seen that email.
Yeah.
Um, May seventeenth and eighteenth.
There's a spring workshop that would mainly be for Janice, myself. I'm not sure if the sheriff is part of that, or. Who else is, but I would be interested in going. So we, that, I just made a motion to be able to go, I drive back to the office.
All with, for those wanting to attend. Either one really.
All in favor?
And then Tanner, did you get a copy of that, May eleventh?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Do we need to go into executive session?
Is that what we do with the auditor?
No, that's at the end here.
That's in the end.
Nineteen.
Do we wanna go into executive and look at the, um. Okay, I need a motion to move it.
Can I ask a question? What about the keys? Well, I must.
It, it got decided in our special meeting. And it's, it was on, uh.
It should be in the minutes of the special meeting. What, what was discussed was there was, we had a problem with somebody locking their keys in the office and having no access. So it was decided that a master key would be obtained to cover all offices except the sheriff's office, and that key would be maintained in the auditor's office.
So.
I don't think we did after we come up, did we? Cause Wayne said he won't go, he let nobody have a key to his office, remember?
But there was no motion made.
Okay.
Oh, I, I thought you did it, but if you didn't, you shouldn't do that.
Okay.
Oh, that's right, you saw the phone.
Yeah, okay, so we need a motion. For the keys. Okay, all in favor? Okay, motion passed. Okay, um, we need a motion to go into executive session on personnel.
I think he gave us that.
What?
Did you give us that motion to go into?
I was wondering what, 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 you talked.
We had an application we gave.
Okay.
Good.
Aye.
All right.
Let me grab the application.